Microphones on please, cell phones off please. Time being six o'clock, I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please Patty.
Don.
Here.
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 Dan.
You.
Wanda.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
Hi Joe.
How you doing Don?
Wonderful.
We have a quorum present and since Commissioner Healy is on the phone, I will step in as chair for him. It's usually easier to run the meeting from the room. Item number three, does any commissioner have a reason to abstain for a financial or a non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not.
Don.
I will not vote on the West City Limits Road.
All right, I do not. Item four is approval of the agenda and we do need to add register of deed quarterly report. And since Mr. Hunoff is here, I would suggest we do it as item four A.
It's not supposed to be on there.
It's on, right at item five on the one, the online one.
I know, but it's not supposed to be on there because I didn't send that to the paper. I sent one with holiday. I don't know. All that got in there, but I did.
All right.
We'll just add it.
Add it for five A.
Five, so on the online agenda, is it after the budget?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do it as five A then, thank you. So five A R O D Q. All right, are there any other needed amendments? Entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I would move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Kettering to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries five zero. Now is the time for public comment. Would any citizen care to make a public comment at this time? Public comment is closed with no comment. So we were at item five, which is the 2023 budget. And the main reason this was put on the agenda was to discuss the salary increase to the matrix for 2023. We had briefly touched on it during our budget meeting. The Commissioner Healy wasn't there, so we thought it best to get a little input from all five commissioners on this. So our CPI allowance for 2023 is 3.0%. Our growth is 1.6%. So we need to decide what to adjust the matrix for for 2023. Everything proposed was for 4%. Because that was before we knew what our growth would be. And usually growth had been running about 1%. So I'd entertain any comments at this time.
I do feel that we will likely need to revisit the matrix overall in the next couple of years and there may be some adjustments. But with that, in trying to keep up with with some of the inflation and just competition, quite frankly, I would, I would feel comfortable going higher than the 4%. You know, base, I would feel comfortable giving CPI and growth to the employees.
So that would be 4.6%. Now, within the matrix itself, when an employee gets a step increase, they get another 2%, so that would be a 6.6% once they receive their step increase, which could be in any month of the year, January through December, depending on their position. Other comments?
I would agree with Joe and probably even nudged it a little higher than 4.6%.
Lincoln County today, granted, we're not Lincoln County, but they did a 10% increase for their law enforcement today.
They actually did it for all their employees.
Well, I don't.
They also do Juneteenth too.
Yeah, I don't know that we have the budget for 10%.
No, I'm, I'm not proposing that. I'm just.
We don't have enough.
A reference of what other counties are doing. I'm not proposing 10%, of course.
So Don, are you thinking above 4.6? Are you thinking five or somewhere in between?
I was thinking six.
You were thinking six. You know, and I will cut in here. I did talk to the state auditor's office on some budget items and we were talking about the raises. How some, how some counties are choosing to spend their, their pot of COVID dollars that are freed up now within their general funds. His concern was many of these counties are going to find themselves in about four years in the negative, in the red, because they're, they're increasing their base cost so much now to compete, which you have to do some of. But his forecast is within four or five years, all of those counties will be asking for tax opt-outs to balance their budgets. So those counties are making that decision to ask for tax opt-outs in four to five years. And we know how that goes across the state. Many counties have difficulty passing them. Minnehaha has two in place already. Lincoln County had one fail for some buildings. Cottington had one fail for buildings, et cetera. So that's the balancing act we are faced with today is we can't be too chintzy because our employees get behind, but we also can't be too generous because our taxpayers get behind.
And that is concerning to me because I think now we have all these dollars available, but we aren't going to have those dollars forever. So I can, I can support the 4.6. I can't support obviously 10 or eight.
Patty, could, could you guesstimate how much?
Four.
A 1% increase affects it?
And I, I would say that is $65,000 and that is for our full-time staff only. That's with, because when you give a raise, you're giving a raise and you have seven and a half percent FICA, you've got 6% on top, you get another 13% on top of that. Would be 24. Hundred. So that's 2,400. So call it 2,500. So that's.
That doesn't seem possible.
Get my calculator. So 250. Times 12. So.
250 times 12 times 1%.
Yeah, well, that's, that's 30 and that. So when I did the calculation at home and I have all the salaries for all the full-time people, I calculated 55, $60,000 for 1%. So is it, is it a massive number? No, it's not a massive number.
But.
So 60 times 6% is 360,000. And remember, most employees have another 2% on top of that. So a 6% adjustment is essentially 8%.
But that's in the program, the 2% adjustment. That's, that's, that's in the program we've adopted and have. I'm, I'm just thinking that with the city Yankton, I think we talked about nine or 10%. We have some pretty good people. It doesn't take a whole lot of screw up on some of their jobs that cost us a hundred grand. I think we lost it.
And, and that's true, but the city also has the benefit of sales tax. And every month or every other month on the front of the paper, it says historic record high sales tax. We don't have that kind of money.
Dan, what are your thoughts?
What's that?
What are your thoughts?
Just listening right now.
Wanda, did you, you said 4.6%. Joe said 4.6. Don had six. Do you have any input?
Not at this time.
So I would propose five, 5% would be between those pretty good five, five and a quarter, Don?
Good.
I could do five, five. Joe?
Yeah, I was gonna mention if we did 5% and kind of back to the matrix, I think there's probably positions that, that once we re-evaluated, we would find that, that their salary is price efficient as far as comparable to surrounding areas and there's probably some we're gonna need to adjust more. And so that would kind of blend that, that rather than 4% or 6%, go five now, knowing that there's some positions we probably are gonna need to reevaluate. We're also gonna have to look at, you know, some hiring bonuses and things of that, I think in the future. So keep that in mind.
Yep, and technically, this is, this is, we're not gonna have an official motion on this. This will be put into our budget because we still have to adopt it in September for the provisional and we can still make changes through the end of the year. Dan, did you have any input?
I think going along with budget increases is an appropriate time to talk about holidays as well because holidays are something that are a morale piece and doesn't necessarily cost the county. I know at our eight county meeting, the vast majority of the counties do have more holidays than Yankton County as well, so maybe we can't go the 6% like has been mentioned, but as an added benefit, maybe we do add a holiday like the state has or at least follow the state's guidance on holidays. I know Juneteenth, the talk I got from the people in, in here wasn't very busy, especially at the treasurer's office and some of these offices that interact with the state system, there's not a lot that can be done. And to me, it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense to be open, just to be open, especially when these offices can't do their normal operations.
Well, conversely, some of those smaller counties don't work past four o'clock either. Should we then adjust our, our salaries to reflect the smaller counties?
I think working at the smaller county is different than following state guidelines with holidays. To me, that's different, but.
So, and I think that is a discussion not under the 2023 budget at this time. So are you good with the 5% recommendation?
I can go along with that.
So general consensus 5%? So I will, I will adjust that and send that all out to the department leaders so that they.
Do you want them to review their budgets?
We're gonna need to for that. So to make sure that we, we have as accurate a picture of next year as we can. All right, any other comments on 2023 budget at this time?
My only comment is it is under heading 150. Should that be broken up into 151, 152, and 153, or are we just gonna lump it all?
Oh, that's in court. We don't put public defender. Public defender goes into the court, 130.
So the state's attorney's budget is 675?
Yep.
Judicial is 500. Okay. All right, with that, unless there's any final comments, we'll close item five and we'll move on to five A. Mr. Hunoff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you letting me come in here. I know the third Tuesday is normally designated for these quarterly reports, but I'll be out of town that, that day, so I appreciate you letting me come early. I'll, I'm just gonna add one editorial or comment or whatever you wanna call it to the discussion on the holidays. It was very dead that day. I mean, you know, the state offices and federal offices were closed, the banks were closed and it was kind of a graveyard here. And most, most counties were closed that day and I think we're one of only four counties that are open for Native American Day, so just throwing that out there. To my report, we had a good April, $30,772. We had a pretty good May, $27,435. We had an excellent June, $40,659, which is the third best revenue month we've ever had. And also we had 22.6 million move in real estate last month. And that's the second best number we've ever had for, for real estate in a month. So I mentioned that, that 40,659 was our third best revenue month. We've been over 40,000 two other times, but those were really the result of anomalies. For instance, in April 2012, we had a $47,000 month, but 32,000 of that was from a, a deal I made with a, a company to sell 10 years worth of digital records. So that was an anomaly, doesn't happen very often. And then in June 2021, last year, we had a $49,000 month, but 13,000 of that came from a big apartment building sale. We haven't seen anything that big since. So this, this was a good month in that, you know, a lot of just average sales. I think we only had two sales all month, the top two million, none that topped two million. Most of them were in that, you know, two, 300,000 range. Onto the quarter, overall, very good second quarter. We had $98,867 in total revenue. Birth certificates, marriage licenses, marriage certificates, deeds were all up. Death certificates, mortgages, mortgage satisfactions were down. But in terms of revenue breakdown, we had $10,654 for copies. We had $49,453 for transfer fees that quarter. We had $190 for notary fees. We had $38,570 in regular fees. That'd be like recording fees and, and vital records income. So for the quarter, we sold a total of $49.5 million in real estate as a county. And that's a big number. That's, that's all I have. I just appreciate you letting me come early. Answer any questions.
I think so. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Entertain a motion to approve the ROD quarterly report.
Move approval of the report.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to approve the register of deeds quarterly report. Further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Joe, you still with us?
Yep, I hit the button too late. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Just wanna make sure. Item number six, we have a two-day malt beverage license for the upper deck. Any comments or concerns? Is the applicant here? No, okay.
I'd move approval of the two-day application.
Second.
Motion by Healy, second by Clemish to approve a two-day application for the upper deck bar and grill for July 29th and 30th. Since this is a liquor license, would any person care to make a public comment on it? Okay, there's no public comment. Any other discussion by the commissioners? All right, motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. We are on to item seven. Ms. Nelson, come on up. Mead Cultural Education Center.
All right, good evening. My primary purpose for being here is to seek your support. And as I've been doing over the last five years, trying to get this South Dakota Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives grant. I need county support in order to apply for the grant. So the letter of intent is due on July 15th. And then if they, we qualify, which in the past we have qualified and been invited to do the full application, I would probably come back again with a full application because again, a commissioner will need to sign off on that and probably do a resolution in support of us moving forward with the project. What we've done in the past is the Yankton County Historical Society takes care of basically managing the entire project. We're gonna be asking them for $109,520 of that. The Yankton County Historical Society is going to be paying $35,920. That's in kind and cash match of our own because you do have to match at least 23, 25%. So it's a 32% match. It is for the restoration of historic transportation-related features. So it's going to be the 1890s Great Northern Railroad Depot at the museum, the 1940s great, sorry, Chicago Northwestern Speeder Car Maintenance House and the Burlington Northern Caboose from the 1970s. So they all need some much-loved TLC. In the past, Dan has been the one that has signed it, but it can be anybody, so.
Okay, so you need a motion for us to approve applying for a South Dakota TA grant. What's TA?
Transportation Alternatives.
Alternatives. I would move to approve the request for Yankton County Historical Society to apply for the South Dakota Transportation Grant.
Could, could you add in there and authorize me to sign the paperwork? Because that's what we've done in the past.
Do you want to amend it to say that?
If. You don't.
I, I think you can sign it if the chair lets you sign it.
All right.
And I'm okay with Dan Clemish signing the.
Thanks, Wanda.
The.
I'll second that then.
Transportation Alternatives.
I'll second that.
So there is a motion by Fox, second by Clemish. And Fox, did you add that into your motion?
I will add that into my motion. Do you want me to restate it?
Nope. So Fox has made a motion to approve the South Dakota, applying for a South Dakota Transportation Alternatives grant and allowing Commissioner Clemish to sign for the county. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All apposed. All opposed say nay. Sorry, I was trying to write and speak at the same time. Not, so motion passes five zero. I shouldn't do that. Wanted to get that in there. So anything else?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. I just wanna make sure that everybody's getting our newsletter on a regular basis. I think we've been sending that over. And to give you guys a quick update, we've got all of our big historic buildings moved out. We've just got the smaller ones to deal with. And this year, we're still gonna be adding a new parking lot, some more signs, a billboard, sidewalks. We added a new staff person this year, Rob Marlowe, who's our program coordinator, been a very busy guy. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up to you guys is that we will be contacting you. In 2023, we're gonna be bringing a Smithsonian exhibit to the museum and it is all about the vitality of rural America. So we're gonna be reaching out to the commissioners to ask you the same question we're asking all Yankton County residents, which is what does rural mean to you? And this is an opportunity for our county to actually be part of the exhibit when it comes. So we've been at the Market Meridian and all kinds of stuff, gathering rural stories and things like that. So we're gonna be reaching out to you about that. And then the last thing was that I do hear we are gonna be getting the old, the historic clock tower from the original Yankton County, not the original, sorry, the second Yankton County courthouse. It's very large, I hear. We haven't gotten it yet. But hopefully, when we do get it, we can figure out how to mount it, which might be some added costs so that we can get it prominently displayed permanently. So maybe coming back to you guys to ask for some funding support to put something together for it. So. But since I don't have it yet, I can't really say what that would be.
Are you having the October sleepover again this year?
Of course, yeah, we will have the night at the Mead in October, usually the weekend of Halloween. Yeah.
You should get that out.
We will be, yeah.
Earlier the better.
Yep, that's all I have.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Item number eight, we are ahead of schedule, so we need to wait on item eight and the Board of Adjustments. And item 11 will take probably a little too long.
What about 13?
Well, or 12, we can, we can approve the minutes. Item number 12.
I would move to approve the June 21, 2022 minutes.
Second.
So there's a motion by Fox, second by Kettering to approve the June 21st, 2022 meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. We also have the June 30th, 2022 meeting minutes and that was our budget meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Kettering, second by Fox to approve the June 30th, 2022 budget meeting minutes. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay.
I will abstain.
Motion carries four zero with Healy abstaining. We're still ahead. So item 13 is claims. Are there any questions on the claims?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Healy, second by Fox to approve the claims as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. June 2022 payroll.
Move approval of the June 22.
Second.
Motion by Kettering, second by Clemish to approve the payroll. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. And unanticipated revenue. And I think this is for emergency management. Is that correct? So we need a motion to approve.
Are these for the state radios? Do you know Patty or what radios these are?
For the emergency management, I'm not sure. He just told us to leave the radios. The radios from that you guys approved for long time ago. No, I don't, I don't think they're.
Okay.
I would move to approve unanticipated revenue.
Second.
So motion by Fox, second by Clemish to approve unanticipated revenue for emergency management in the amount of $5,826.46. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. So that closes out 12 and 13. And better check. I've got 6:30. So item number eight is a rezone first reading. Bill, did you wanna read what this is?
You mean from the, from the words you like?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
I know it's long, but please do.
Sort of make sure I had the right thing.
Yep, you're good.
Applicant is requesting to rezone a rural transitional district to commercial district per article.
Applicant is requesting to rezone a rural transitional district to commercial district per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine, and Article twenty, section twenty two oh three, two thousand three, excuse me. Said property is legally described as the south one hundred sixteen feet of lot one in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter. Lot two in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter. And lot three in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, all located in section twenty-four Township ninety-four range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, according to the duly recorded plat thereof in the office of the Yankton County Register of Deeds filed to record April twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-nine, and recorded in book S eight on page one forty-four, subject easements, restrictions, covenants, and reservations of record. And also lot one, except the south one hundred sixteen feet thereof, located in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter, section twenty-four Township ninety-four north of range fifty-five, fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine oh one address is three zero six three seven US Highway eighty-one, Yankton, South Dakota.
Thank you for that. Since this is the first reading, would any citizen care to make a public comment at this time about the application? All right, there being none, I will close the time for a public comment on this for the first reading.
We have Mr. Mark Ward representing some of the questions.
Absolutely. Is he here? There he is.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Dave Husby. I represent the Mark Ward family. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have. The parcel is real obvious. It's the Mark Ward Farms facility, which is about a four acre piece, and then a fifteen acre inverse seven. It sits on top of the double T truck stop. It's been rural transitional. There's a access point directly onto Highway eighty-one already exists. We won't be needing to ask DOT or anybody for any additional access.
I guess a question that, that I'm going to get to, so I'm going to come right out and get to it.
Sure.
Is, uh, I, I believe it's, uh, straight across the road from Callan and Strites Cement Building, cement plant. Uh, there's a couple of large stories facilities and three or four cattle trucks parked there. Is that Mr. Mark Ward's property?
Right here?
No. Not what you're talking about. I'm talking about what's across the road from Callan and Strites property.
At the end of twenty-third street.
I I can't answer that question. I've just, I don't know for sure where that is. Sorry, I'm not a Yankton resident, so.
Can you answer?
I can pull it up on Beacon and we can find out. Except to be Bob lawns. This is the Callan Street. So you're talking about this parcel?
Yeah.
Bob law.
Bob law.
No questions. There's some very inappropriate flags flying over that property, and I think it's ridiculous. I would not be in favor of approving further rezoning. I would not be in favor of approving further rezoning if, if that was Mr. Mark Ward's property.
Yeah, probably the only flag you'd see flying on a Mark Ward property would be an American flag or a South Dakota flag.
Thank you.
Does that measure any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
She can do it during public comment.
Yeah, at the, at the end of the meeting during public comment, we've already closed it for this application, so. All right, any questions by the commissioners at this time? In the packet, the findings from the planning commission are presented. Should I walk through those at this meeting, or would we like to walk through those at the second reading?
Second reading is fine.
Second reading? All right. So I would encourage the commissioners to look through the, um, comprehensive plan and make sure that the findings here align with your interpretation of the comprehensive plan. Okay, at this time, we will close the first reading. Entertain a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
I would move to Board of Adjustment.
All right, so motion by Fox, second by Healy, I'll give him that one. To go into Board of Adjustment, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are now sitting as Board of Adjustment. I'm going to check my clock here real quick. Yep, we're good. So it's six thirty-five. Item number nine is the Palfrey variance. Did I say that correctly? All right, why don't you folks come on up and tell us what you're asking for?
There's a whole group. Adjust, adjust.
Adjust. Yeah, so if you speak, go ahead and say your name for the auditor.
My name is Deb Palfrey.
I'm Darcy Griffiths.
My name is Denise Byerly Speck.
Darren Byerly.
I'm Eric Palfrey.
What was the last name? No, the last gentleman, your full name. I missed that one totally.
Eric.
Eric, okay. All right, so who's speaking about the application? And what you're asking for?
We're asking for a variance to put a second dwelling on the property.
And I think in your application, you said it was going where a current building is located?
Correct. There's an old garage.
Which one of those is the?
The little white one.
On the south side?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And this is for your parents?
Correct, yes.
Any questions for the applicants from the commissioners?
Oh, we've done similar projects for parents in the past.
All right, there being no question. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Did I understand that they're currently in the house that's there and then they would move to the new one?
You're fading.
They are currently living in the house that is there. It's a, a split foyer house, and they're years old, and so they're really struggling doing the stairs.
Sure, that makes sense. And then what? One of you will be residing in the other home, I take it?
Me and my husband will be right residing in the current home that is on there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from commissioners?
And, and just so we're clear and following in conjunction with the findings of fact of the planning commission, you don't propose at some later date to split that up and sell it off after mom and dad pass away?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
That's why we're here. We're siblings, and it's very important for us that it stays in the family.
Is the surrounding property owned by your family as well?
The, in the red is what is owned by our family right now. Behind, towards the west is not, and towards the, well, yeah, basically no. Just the nine acres in the red.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, folks, you can all sit down for now.
Okay.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Any person care to make a public comment on the application? There being no comments, I will close public comment and move it back to the commission for discussion. You know, I, I, before I walk through the findings of fact on this, in reading through, and I know I, I talked to Bill a little bit about this, or emailed you a little bit about this. This is a nine acre lot, so it's, it's a non-conforming lot. But in our ordinance, section sixteen oh three, and the reason I'm saying all this is I wonder why we need a variance to begin with. In any district, so non-conforming lots of record sixteen oh three, in any district in which single-family dwellings, manufactured or modular homes are permitted, these structures and customary accessory buildings may be erected on any single lot of record at the effective date of adoption or amendment of this ordinance, notwithstanding limitations imposed by other provisions of this ordinance. This provision shall apply even though such lots fail to meet requirements for area or width or both that are generally, generally applicable in the district, provided that yard dimensions and requirements other than those applying to area or width or both of the lot shall conform to the regulations for the district in which such lot is located. So when I go to egg, which is what this is in, and I go to five thirteen four, so five thirteen is minimum lot requirements. And number four, the zoning administrator may allow a smaller minimum lot requirement where an established single-family home exists or where a permit for a single-family home is requested on an existing farmstead site. And then five sixteen two states, an additional dwelling unit by definition is allowed within the farmstead upon approval of the building permit application if it is to be occupied by other members of the family, provided the property is not transactioned or prepared, plotted, or described for transaction. So when I put, I read all those and I put them all together, our non-conformant section says single-family dwellings can be built on non-conforming lots. And when I go to section five, we can put a second home in a farmstead. So there's my question is why do we need a variance? My opinion, this should be allowed with the building permit.
I think if I had to guess, it's just an overabundance of caution.
Yes.
I would think that, um, the Palfrey family doesn't want to get sideways with the county is my guess. I don't know, I've not spoken to them, but it makes sense to me that if you can put a home on a property, have the family live there, and have your aged parents be able to live in a one-level residence rather than putting them in the nursing home, which in my opinion is the kiss of death for older people. It just makes sense. And I understand the, the hesitancy and reluctance to grant a variance.
But I, I guess my, my challenge here is
Can, can I ask you a little question why, why it's going through this way instead of a variance? Because I, I know in the past, uh, they've always been, this is more of a historical process that it went this way and, and, uh, at least my discussion with planning and zoning is they don't have a, a comfort level of proceeding with it in the other way. If you would like to add, go ahead.
Everything everybody said is correct, and the caution is kind of on our part too. So we agreed with everything that you mentioned, but then the non-conformant section sixteen talks about expanding a non-conforming lot. And so Gary and I discussed it, you know, those two things conflict. So I happened to be talking to Deb and Rob and asked them, and they recommended that the best thing to do is to go the variance route. I mean, we told, we totally understand, we agree, but when you have those two confictions, everything Sherry mentioned, and then the non-conforming part of it, expanding that, we just thought it was better to get, get this route.
But we specifically rewrote the last changes, so we wouldn't need variances for this specific situation. So if they were coming and they just wanted to put a shed up, they got to have a variance for that.
No, but the second living quarters.
Well, but in here, it says, they talk about dwellings. These structures and customary accessory buildings may be erected. So they're saying homes and buildings can be erected on non-conforming lots that are too small. And, and again, I, I get to, we specifically did this so we wouldn't do variances because again, variances are, are for unique situations, and I, I just really struggle telling these folks they got to pay four hundred and fifty dollars for a variance when I just don't think they do.
No, they've already paid it.
Well, they don't mean we can't give it back if it's not the right thing to do. I just, it's just.
I, I would have to say if, if the zoning department doesn't feel comfortable with that, working with the state's attorney's office, they don't feel comfortable with it, then it's on us to tighten up the ordinance and make it more clear. And with that, that's not
We did that.
Man, I have the floor, I believe. And with that, I think the Palfrey family is doing the right thing and go through the process that we laid out. And so with that, I'd make a motion
Now, we haven't walked through, we have not walked through the, the findings of fact yet, so please hold off. Joe, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, I did. Um, there's a couple of things, and I, I can see, you know, I can see Bill's point where with the second home, it, it maybe brings in a heightened, um, concern on a non-conforming lot. But to me, sixteen doesn't even come into play. Um, to me, Article five states that you can have a second home, family, uh, family dwelling as part of the, the farm family unit. So to me, I'm comfortable with just a building permit, and then back to, um, the non-conforming lots. For quite a few years, we were, we were issuing variances for, um, homes to be built on a smaller, non-conforming lot. And upon review three years ago of this ordinance, we all agreed that that the variance process was unnecessary. It's, it's stated right in there that lots of existing record could, could move forward with simply a building permit. So I would concur with Sherry that we we issue a building permit and refund their, their check, their money, and we all move on.
Any other comments on that?
Deb, is that the state's attorney's office position?
Microphone.
I know Rob had talked to Bill, and I think, and so had I, and the, and the confusion, I think, was the fact that non-conforming kind of Rob's position was trumps everything. And so if the idea was, because like if you give up your non-conforming status, so say for example, that original homestead was gone, then you, you lose that grandfathered status that you have. But I can certainly see Sherry's point as well. I mean, I think that's why Bill and, and Gary were talking to Rob about which provision would trump what. Sherry's argument makes sense.
I guess I, I can see.
Would you advise us to, to do then? Would you advise? Because this is, this will be a, um, a turnaround of, you know, almost twenty years of precedence with this, and that's, that's fine if we do that way. But if we're going to do just a building permit for this or not do a variance, I'm fine either way, but is your advice, which, which way is the safest way for Yankton County to proceed?
Well, given that we changed the ordinance on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'd legal representative, because I don't want to get the county sued from this, so. The, what would you?
I think Sherry's point is there's no twenty years of precedence. It was that we, we changed this, we modified it specifically to address.
Nobody can hear you.
Joe, Joe, you're turning away from your microphone. Can you state that one more time, please?
Sorry, I, I think I was saying to your point is we, we modified this to address the specific situation in twenty twenty-one. So twenty years of precedence is, uh, really not a valid argument. in twenty twenty one. So twenty years of precedence is uh really not a valid argument.
I don't have a problem giving them a comfort order. Cause that's what it is.
With the variance.
Yeah.
My myself as well. They've already paid it. There's the hearing. If we want to proceed in a different way, moving forward, that's fine, but they're already here. So I guess, again, I would make a motion to approve the variance.
You can't, cause she hasn't gone through the findings.
Why can't I do it? Okay.
Cause she's chair today.
Yeah. I get it. You don't like.
Don, did you have any comments you'd like to make? So the planning commission, um we've already stated what's being asked. Such hardship is not shared generally by others. And it says hardship is not generally shared. Which I find challenging to say. Um, the authorization of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property and the character of the district will not be changed by the variance and their finding was will not be of detriment. The granting of such variance is based upon reasons of demonstrable and exceptional hardship as distinguished from variations for purposes of convenience, profit, and caprice. And they said that is not here. Uh, no variance shall be recommended for approval unless a planning commission finds the condition or situation of the property concerning or the intended use of the property concerned, or the intended use of the property is not of so general or recurring a nature as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation to be adopted as an amendment of this ordinance. And they said situation is not so general and recurring, et cetera. I have a hard time with that one. Item three, uh, a written application for a variance is submitted demonstrating that special conditions circumstances exist exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved. Um, they said the application is submitted, the literal interpretation, the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance. And they said it would deprive the applicants of those rights. Uh, the special conditions circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Conditions are not a result of the applicant. The granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structure or buildings. And no special privilege is was found. Uh, no nonconforming use of neighboring land structures or buildings in the same district. And no permitted or nonconforming use of land, structures, or buildings in other districts shall be considered grounds for the issuance of a variance. Um, they said use is conforming with the district. The notices were mailed, the public healer hearing was held. And they, the planning commission shall make findings that the requirements of this section have been met. Um, and they noted those findings to the right there. In recommending approval of any variance, the planning commission may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards and conformity. So there is a motion to approve variance with conditions property shall remain in the family and not be divided. Past six zero. Under no circumstances shall the planning commission recommend granting a variance to allow a use not permissible under the terms. Uh, use is permissible in an egg district. So those were the findings from the planning commission. I did have a couple of issues with a couple which I noted because we amended the ordinance to take care of some of those issues.
Move approval of the variance.
Second.
So I have a motion by Clemish and a second by Fox to approve this variance. And I will say again, I do not believe we need a variance. I believe we should refund the four fifty and give them a building permit.
I I think the issue with that is both the state's attorney's office and our zoning office don't feel comfortable. And maybe that's, uh, you need to have a conversation with them and discuss this new path forward. I would have to agree with you, but if we're being advised by people who have a lot more zoning experience than we do to go this way. I think that's the best way to go for the county.
Are we in discussion on the motion?
Absolutely, Dan.
I have a hard time uh finding anything wrong with their request. Uh, they just want to get a a problem in their family resolved and we're dealing with a bunch of uh internal uh questions here. And all they want is is to resolve their house problem. Either way would would resolve it. And certainly with the four hundred and fifty dollars back, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. So uh I don't have a problem with either way, but and I'll support either one. But I want them to have their property and their house and move on with this.
So we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Joe?
No.
No. I believe and Don said you would support it to get back their four fifty and give them a building permit.
I would make them, I don't know that what's necessary, but I would make a motion to uh approve the building permit and refund the four hundred and fifty dollars to the applicants.
I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion by Healy and a second by Kettering. To approve a building permit for these people and to give them their four hundred and fifty dollars back.
How does that go together with the variance that was just passed? I mean, don't they conflict? I mean, if we give them variance and that was voted on and now where there's a second motion, give them the money back. We're not in the building permit job. I think that's the zoning people.
So are you saying we don't need a motion? We just need to advise the planning office to give them the four fifty back and issue them a building permit?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying how do these two intertwine? If we're gonna grant them a variance, three to two verse, and maybe they can share with that. I don't have a problem with giving them, but I just want them to get their elderly parents in a home.
The motion failed because a variance needs four votes.
Oh, there we go.
So that's why. Sorry. I should have made that clear after we voted.
But doesn't also overturning the department and issuing a permit require that to a four vote? Listen, I want I want these these people, Don just said it earlier. They want to get on and and build a house for their relatives and that's admirable. And there's a disconnect, Sherry, between you and Joe and and the zoning office. I would say you guys should fix that for the next one. Don't harm these people. Cause now they're in gray area, being the first people to get a building permit this way. I'd be scared if I was them too.
I don't believe they are the first.
Get with the zoning office, get your guys' difficulties and your differences of opinions resolved. Because both the zoning office, Mr. Vedder, and the state's attorney's office went through this way for a reason.
Well, then I would do this. I would make a motion.
Well, we we have one motion on the table.
But I think we should amend that motion.
Okay.
We should amend that motion to say that these folks can get their four hundred and fifty dollars back, that a building permit will be issued and that the rest of us will deal with what appears to be an ambiguity in the zoning ordinance, so we don't have to have this conversation again.
Does that need to be part of the motion, though? Can that, or can that just be the intent is in there, we put even on nonconforming lots, even though it's already in there?
I just don't want to do this two or three or four more times.
Madam Chair.
Joe?
I I might suggest that I rescind my motion and that this uh should just be an advisory to the uh zoning office to issue and refund. So I rescind my motion. And one one point, uh, I guess I'd like to make is if if somebody was in front of us with an application to with a variance request to build um build storage units in a lakeside commercial area, would we grant them the variance or would we say, wait a minute here, you don't need one?
So right now, Joe has rescinded his motion, so is everyone okay with advising the planning office to just issue a building permit and refund the money?
I'm okay with that.
Joe's okay with it, Don?
I'm okay.
Dan?
If they'll do it, I mean, it sounds like both the state's attorney's office and the zoning office don't think that that's the best way to do it. So we, I I want these people to get what they wanted and the clearest path was denied by you, so I think that really puts them in in a difficult spot, if you ask me.
So I got the nod from the state's attorney's office that they think this is a good path forward.
Is that?
So there's four of us who support that.
Okay.
So folks, are you clear?
You get money back.
Are you clear? So you'll get a building permit?
Let us know.
Okay, all right. We'll close that one out. Thanks for your time and patience with our discussion. So.
Appreciate it.
Wait, Deb has something to say.
And then Sherry, everybody just know, we will Rob and Bill and Gary and I will sit down and we'll figure out what exactly the confusion is. And if we need to modify the language to make it clear.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
So houses, residents in an egg area on on their twenty acres are now a permitted use? Or what?
They always have been, Dan. They've been in the, in this ordinance from the dawn of time. They've been a permitted use on a nonconforming lot of existence.
All right. We got that clear. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, item number ten.
Go quickly.
Quick.
Before minds are changed.
Thank you very much.
Wow, that was.
This, uh, should I say, is it shut?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Go ahead and um explain your project, please. Thank you.
Get a handout? Commissioner Healy, I gave a handout to your co-commissioners and it's just really a a little better drawing than the one I gave when I came to the planning commission, so. Um, thank you for letting me talk to you about this project. It's a pretty nice project. Um, the chats are asking for a variance to build what I'm calling condo units. They are not units that will be lived in.
A variance or a conditional use?
Conditional use. I'm thinking about the last discussion. Conditional use for condo units, they will not be condos that will be lived in or residences. They'll be used as what's commonly referred to as man forts or shops for electricians, plumbers. It could be storage units. Um, there'll be individual units that are fully insulated with concrete floors, water, sewer.
Bathrooms.
Septic. You could put a bathroom in there if you wanted.
Each one of these has a bathroom?
If you wanted to. Uh, so they'll, each one will have water. Somebody may put in a sink, somebody may put in a shower, somebody may put in a bathroom. Um, somebody may put in a kitchen or or a bar. So that kind of a use or um each of the units would then, could then be sold. So if you think of a townhouse or twin home where there's multiple units together. But each one is sold individually. So where we run into a problem with Yankton County zoning is the setback requirement. Which wouldn't fit uh into this type of a project. Um, so again, each unit would be have its own address for E nine one one. Each unit would have its own legal description. Each unit would have its own owner, but it would be into one building. So the buildings themselves meet the setback requirements um as required by Lakeside Commercial. But once they're built, they would be resurveyed, replanted into individual buildings. You wouldn't do that ahead of time because once the footings are set, even if they're off six inches, then your lot line would move. Does that make sense? They would have access from the dedic- dedicated roads. Um, there's a road, an access road along highway fifty on the north side. And there's an access that will come in the future along the west side of that development. There's also access from Buck Drive on the south. There's an easement through there. What questions can I answer for you?
Have you, have you talked to uh the folks that have generally been fighting about Buck Drive and Alphonse Road about increased traffic?
Have I talked to them about their fight? I'm, no, I'm not aware of their fighting. Uh, our access would come from the north primarily.
And are you gonna get a letter from DNR that supports allowing bathroom showers, water, whatever?
Yeah.
To all what appear to be twenty six units? Or is it all of the units?
There's eighty three units. Yeah, so they'll have to work through DNR to get the septic requirements taken care of and the drain field requirements. So again, these are not homes, so they're not gonna be used like a home. They're shops. They're gonna be used like a shop, so I know my home, we use about seven thousand gallons of water a month. I know at my shop, I use about eighteen gallons of water. I'm saying I might flush the toilet once a week, that kind of thing. So it's a lot less water usage.
But they're going to, some of them are anticipated to be man caves.
Yeah. Or she sheds.
With no windows?
With no windows, except maybe in the garage door. There might be some windows, but no windows in the.
So in theory, you buy one of these man caves.
Sure.
And your spouse decides to kick you out for a couple of weeks. You could go live in one of these, in theory.
Uh, that wouldn't be a lawful use, no.
Okay.
Anymore that I could go live in stringers.
Where?
Stringers when my wife kicks me out.
So thinking ahead, if these are built and once they start getting sold, you're gonna need a variance for every one of those to be platted.
That's why I'm hoping we're here tonight, because we wouldn't want to get a conditional use permit. Build the buildings. Come back and be denied a variance. Does that make sense?
Yep. So the only, in the ordinance, the only thing I can see is a variance.
And the variance is for what?
For lot line on a plat. Cause your building would be right on the lot line.
But I think the concept that he's talking about. We we allow townhomes.
With variances.
Not, not always. I mean, a townhome is a, I think it's a conditional use in a lot of these areas. And each one of the townhomes is split. We don't do a variance. That's, that's part of the conditional use process is that it's a townhome. And two different people own it. It's, I think it requires, what requires thinking a little bit differently about it. And the same as the condos, Don, those condos we put out by the lake, each one of those are sold. And they didn't come in and have a variance for each one of those. I believe that as long as.
Was that before zoning, though?
No.
The townhouses out there?
I know, they got variances.
No, they don't. Um, they came in for conditional use permit when when we did those.
You mean Calumet Landing?
What's, no, no, the, what are those?
Marina Bluff, the Marina Bluff condos.
Three big ones out there. So each one of those are sold.
Those were, but those were apartment buildings. Those are different.
Those are condos.
Those are condos where each one is soldier.
But they're not platted.
Yes.
Each one of them has a different plat?
They have.
Their, their, each ones are are sold. And I think he's looking for solutions here on on this and maybe is, maybe there's a a different way to
They're not playing.
Think of it. If you go on the plat map, I don't believe they're individually.
Because they're, uh, cause I had Bill look at a town, a a twin home that was built. Was it on lilac?
Marina Bluff.
That area. So those, yes, I agree. That's different, though.
There they are.
Yeah, see, there you go. So we're already doing similar type things.
Well, that's, that should have had a variance because it doesn't meet the lot line setback.
All right, I, I don't think so, sure.
So we know you're right.
Done as a conditional use with, with that added in there, cause Don and I were on the planning commission.
So those are three levels and there's a plat for each of those? Aren't those three levels or are they all from bottom up?
There's three different levels, first floor, second floor, third floor.
Right?
On two sides, so six in each.
So there's six, so they have their three stories on six. Wow, I, frankly, I'm. Really surprised there was no variance there because the lot line requirement is not met. That's, our ordinance requires a lot line setback, so.
In your interpretation, that's.
That Gary asked us to come through this C U P process.
I don't have a lot of experiences, but I talked to Gary about it and he did some research on and they gave some examples. He said it like this, one, the building itself meets the lot line requirements. You just acknowledge that. There's gonna be a zero setback between each, each unit and G I S can go in and. Draw the lines for each unit, give them parcel I D number as their own unit.
So can I, can I draw a box around my house? And subplat that off? Can I do that?
We'll have to.
Are you okay with me doing that?
Give you a variance, Sherri. I don't know if you'll vote for it, though.
No, I'm serious, because we, we need to follow our ordinance.
These went through a conditional use permit.
Well, I'll go through a conditional use permit process, but that conditional use permit does not allow me to break the ordinance. For lot line setbacks. A variance does.
I think Mr. Speck, he's, he's looking for solutions and looking to us on.
Absolutely.
If we can make this work.
Absolutely, and I'm not against changing the ordinance to meet things like this. But we can't read into the ordinance certain things that aren't there.
I would, I would have to agree with Sherri's logic on this as well. Um. There's no, to me, there's no ifs, ands and bu- or buts. The ordinance says that lot line. Needs a variance if it doesn't meet it. In a, in certain situations, a variance is appropriate. If this is how we are addressing, um, existing townhomes, uh, condos, et cetera. And have in the past without issuing a variance, we really should have and it should be addressed. So my opinion, my opinion, my open- opinion going forward is we're not here to. Impede people and have them go through extra steps. Now, we, I don't personally have an issue with this. Um, if it was done today and there was a variance request, as I'm understanding today, I likely would not have an issue, but I do. Think that a simple fix to this ordinance is adding something in where, um, single buildings. I E condos, et cetera, are, you know, are built under a C U P and sold off as individual units. The lot line setback to the interior walls, uh, is waived or does not exist. And we should probably move. Quickly and get that into the ordinance, and then this is a non-discussion going forward.
I agree with that, Joe, and that would apply to the, uh, four pla- duplexes, fourplexes, et cetera.
So now we're creating a, we're gonna change the zoning ordinance for, for one thing. I, I get you and Joe have an issue with this, but we've been. Have, we've been doing multifamily, two-family.
This isn't family, though.
A long time. I, I know, but how do you, when you do a, a multifamily house, how do you set a lot? Like, we're talking about. Now doing setbacks for interior rooms? That doesn't make any sense, you guys. I mean. You, you're talking about not impeding stuff.
This is storage unit slash man caves.
I don't, what, what about a planned unit development? Would that work for something like this? I'm trying to find solutions here. How big is this lot?
Well, Dan, I think the, the C U P at hand is, we're way off tangent, but I understand they wanna. Uh, test the waters before moving forward, but, um. I do think we need a solution to this. In the near future.
I think the solution is in front of you, Commissioner Healy, with all due respect. I would hate to go through the variance process simply because. I'd hate for my client to put an, in a multi-million dollar building for a variance to be denied, um, because of. Excuse my.
Okay.
Gotta be a little bit careful here, because of infighting that's happening. So, and so when we came to the planning commission, we asked for the best way forward, and this is what we were advised. If there's, needs to be a different way, I would hope that we could, uh, make that happen for you in a short period of time. But with everybody on the same page before we do the work.
Yep, and, and we had a conversation about this and I had advised a variance from the beginning. Now, I did just get information from our equalization office. This is a parcel layer, not a plat layer. Those are not plats. Those are tax parcels. That's different. A plat has to follow our ordinance. And it has to meet the lot line setback unless there's a variance. And in this case, in what you've presented. I could support a variance on this while we change the ordinance. In the long run, because I think more of these things are coming, more duplexes, more fourplexes are coming. And if you look in our ordinance, we have nothing in there on it.
Sherri, do you know, can I interrupt?
Yep.
Do, do you know in Violet, was there variances given on?
There was a variance given for that, cause I looked it up and I asked, and then there was a lawsuit threatened over it.
Probably not on Calumet. I think that was pre.
I think that was pre.
Pre.
That one I didn't, I didn't look into.
Okay, and then there's another one on Vacation Drive.
That I didn't look into either.
Where's Vacation Drive?
That's in Crestview.
Bob laws.
Bob laws. There's just one in there, or two houses, one.
Two duplexes, yeah.
Yeah, we just wanna do a good development, be good neighbors and invest in the county and we wanna be able to do it.
Dan.
Quickly as we can.
Say, Dan.
Yes.
In the city, how do they handle the condos and sales and things of that? Are those truly replatted or are those just parceled off and? Do you know what's going on there?
Yeah, I know exactly what's going on. I'm glad you asked, so I have a chance to market my own buildings. Um, we would do it just like we're asking to do it, the city would. Uh, so on Piper Street, proposing these same. Uh, similar structures. Um. Where, well, we'll only have ten, we'll only have room for ten of these, but we'll go in, we'll build the building, we'll come back and replat it. And, um, sell them. It's a pretty seamless kind of project and what they're looking at. For setbacks is the setback of the building, not the lot line. Cause really, you know, a lot is really kind of an imaginary line in the dirt. Um, so. The setback is for the building. That's really what the ci- cities looking for. And you don't have to go very far. They're building these types of structures like crazy. All over Brookings, Aberdeen, Sioux Falls, Harrisburg, Iowa. So it's, it's not, it's not really a far stretch.
No, and I would agree, and that's why I, I just think we need to wrap our heads around it and get.
Yeah.
Make sure people are on the same page, because it is a large investment and, and we wanna make this, this work. Um, if, in this situation, and maybe touch on others, but in this situation. Um, who's gonna retain the, the dirt, the land? Or are each, or are the lines gonna be parceled off from one end of the property to the other, splitting through the building?
That's a good question, Joe. So the land, um, typically on townhomes, and it will be the same in this case, the land. Not under the buildings will be owned by an association. So the land under the buildings will be owned by individuals who will all be members of the association. They'll have to pay dues. Um, they'll have rules and, and regulations on what they can do with their, their building. And then those people will, um, be responsible for the. Land not under the buildings in terms of pushing snow and mowing and any repairs and that kind of thing. They'll also be responsible for the building.
Where is the off-street parking?
The off-street parking will be. That, well, there won't be any parking outside of the structures. The parking will be inside of the structures.
Okay.
It's where you put your boat in your four-wheel or anything.
So the buildings are. Are the rooms or whatever they are, are fifty feet long and.
There's two different sizes. One of them, um, the building is forty-six feet wide from east to west. And the units are twenty-one feet wide north to south. The, the buildings on the south, those are fifty-eight feet deep buildings by twenty-nine and a half feet wide.
So they're all the same width?
So what, what kind of road's gonna go in?
Concrete is the plan. Well, on, on this property, not the road to the property, that's gravel. As it exists.
Your, is there adequate room, uh, for fire trucks to access?
There's, is it sixty feet between each building? Sixty-five feet between each building.
Please, sixty-four feet, six inches.
If I misspoke on anything, let me know. Okay. You wouldn't require, I don't think, concrete. On this kind of a project, but that's our intention is, is to make it concrete.
And is it, uh, one way in and one way out?
As of this point, it is. Yep. You know, and they're gonna, they are not gonna go build.
I don't think they have room.
One, two, three, four, five, six buildings next year. They're gonna build one and. Get it sold and then go on to the next one and get it sold. Otherwise, you'd have a, you know, eight, nine million bucks.
Looking at this wrong band, six, uh, six buildings, is that middle one a large building or is it?
Yeah, that's right, Dan. The middle one is a, is a unit on each side, unit on the west side and unit on the east side. With the center wall, and now I'll have to be, they'll have to be fire, up to fire code.
Yeah, I'm not sure how a fire truck could come down, uh, between. Uh, one to fourteen units and turn at the end and, and go out the other way.
Yeah, I'd have to ask fire people. The setback on, help me, Bill, what's the setback? Is it twenty-five feet? So the, the sides and the back setbacks done to help is twenty-five feet.
Mr. Cuts, J. Cuts, who works with the rural fire people.
Yeah.
Was in and. Spoke about access. For fire prevention.
Right.
Or other things.
Relative to these?
No.
And that's why we would E nine one one address.
Just in general.
The camping places right across the street. And he says there's no room to turn around with tankers that they need to put out.
In the camping place, I can see, but these are, these are pretty big. I mean, when you think of that twenty-five foot, that's the width of a. Of a paved county road. Right now, East Side Drive is going to twenty-six. And then you, so you're turning from.
We're gonna let them put cement up to the end of their property line.
Which end?
You can, yeah, you can, I could concrete all mine. Yep.
I would think they would just go to the end of the building. Would be the intention.
Well, how are they gonna turn around?
So we, uh, any other questions for the applicant before I open it up for public comment? Jody, have any more questions?
No, I think I've got an understanding of everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I had opened it up for a public comment on this application. Anyone care to make a comment?
He said they'd all have not nine.
So the question was, do they have mailing addresses? Are these residences?
They are not residences, and yes, we would want them to have E nine one one addresses so they could. Be accessed for emergency reasons, maybe easily found.
So they'll be like fancy storage sheds? Can I, can I say that?
Yeah.
Are, are you, are you telling me that, that there're gonna be some man caves out there and they are gonna stay overnight?
Done, they're not allowed to stay overnight. Now, whether they do or not, I don't know. I can guess. Yeah, it's an enforcement issue. I mean, I can guess that people stay overnight lots of times where they're not supposed to for zoning. Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, thanks for your time, guys. My name is Greg, um, part of this project. Um, just to give you a little background, my brother and I have a concrete business and we used to farm. Uh, and we lost the farm like five years ago, just had like three years in a row, really tough times. And we always poured concrete. We had a little business on the side. Um, so we started from scratch. Um, we rented this exact setup, um, to start our business. We had no money to, to go. You know, rent a bigger shop. Um, it was a really small unit. We could park a pickup inside, keep our concrete tools inside and we could. Have our guys punch in. Uh, so we started from, from nothing and that's where our business started out of. Uh, we were in a unit exactly like what we're proposing and all the units were small businesses. Um. So I don't want you to get man cave in your head. I mean, I think people park campers in there, boats in there. That's, that's probably gonna happen. Our heart is, is more to just create a space where people can start, you know, just, hey, we wanna start a lawn. Lawn business. Art, some of our neighbors were, uh, you know, one guy had a lawn business, another guy. Um, was doing some tooling, some iron work, and another guy wanted to work on mowers and. It's just kind of a, a spot where people can, you know, have a, have a place to go that's, uh, you know. They maybe can't go afford to go build a great big shop or take a big leap like that, but it's a, it's a beginning stage, you know, so that would be our heart. And our heart would be to keep it pretty clean. Um, you know, it's, we're in a spot where a guy had a welding shop. And then after a few months, uh, everything out in front of the shop was, you know, the next project and, uh. You know, our idea would be to, you know, have regulations where this stays really neat and clean and picked up as well, so just to. To keep the county looking nice, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Say, be, say, before you sit down, I've got one quick question. Sorry.
No problem.
No, I, I, I appreciate the, the project and where it's, you know, what you wanna do there. I think it's a good, good fit for the area and. Um, there's people in town that do similar things. They rent a little storage unit essentially and, uh. You know, guys that, the end of the day, might sit around and have some beers and whatnot and, you know, there's plumbing there and I think that's a good thing. My only question is. Um, will your, will your H O A or, right, not homeowners associate, but will your association address? Um, residents i- in specifically forbidding residents there or permanent living of some sort?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we do not want it to turn into that at all. Um, so we'll, we'll address that on the front end and it'll be really clear before a, a sale takes place. So we've, we've talked about that. We don't want people building bedrooms in there or anything. It's, it's not what it's designed for. We wanna stop that on the front end, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other public comment? We'll close public comment with that one question. Bring it back. I'm going to go through the findings of fact from the planning commission for the conditional use permit. Um, let's see, we had public hearings and mailings. Um, planning commission make a recommendation to include, let's see, they approved the CUP on the condition that a letter from the D A N R is submitted before a building permit is issued. The motion passed six zero, uh ingress and egress to proposed structures. They said that is present. Off right-of-way parking and loading areas where required and they said off right-of-way parking is present. Refuge and service areas will be made available. Utilities are present. Have you spoken with BY Water? Or BY Electric yet? Great, thank you for that. They're usually the last to know. Uh, screening and buffering with reference to type, dimension and character will follow the highway fifty-two corridor guidelines. Uh, signs if any and proposed exterior lighting. Any signs will follow regulations in the ordinance. And I'm assuming that's downcast lighting out there and such. I'm, I'm assuming that. Required yards and open spaces, none required. General compatibility with adjacent properties in general. Uh, it's compatible and will not adversely affect public interest there. So those were the findings of fact from the planning commission. Uh, they did not have in their motion that there was to be no residences there. Any other discussion on the commission's behalf?
And regarding residents, I don't know if it's necessary because it wouldn't fit the conditional use and they'd be in violation of that.
True.
So with that, I, I would.
Put it as a condition though.
I would make a motion to approve based on findings of fact.
With a provision that there'd be no residents?
If that's sticking point, yep.
Well, it is to me.
I, I think it's a good idea to Wanda's point to just put that in there. I mean, that's what these guys are saying anyway and then if, if somebody's gonna be upset about that, then.
I, I understand that the proponents want to stop that going in, but um you know how people are. I bought it. I wanna live there. Well, I understand that, but that becomes an enforcement issue which becomes a county issue. And, and Don's really busy. He just doesn't have time for that.
So I have a motion on the table to approve based on findings of fact with the additional restraint of no residences.
I would second.
So motion by Healy, second by Fox. Further discussion?
Are we gonna talk about the fire access? Are we gonna talk about the width of the roads going in and out? Are we gonna talk about any of those things that uh have been brought to our attention in previous requests?
And Don, my, my thought on that is I think those are all important um aspects, but being non-residents, uh, non-campgrounds, um, I don't feel it's quite as important. Uh, I do, I do feel that, you know, a fire truck needs to access all the buildings, but um it's a different scenario when, when there aren't people living there.
So I counted ceiling tiles, if everybody is watching me doing something kinda weird there, but I think this room is maybe a little over thirty feet wide. So when you look between those buildings, minimum is sixty-two foot. So a fire truck would have almost twice this area to drive down between buildings. Is, am, am I getting that space about right? This is about thirty-something. And then on the end, there's at least twenty-five foot, which is the same width as a county paved road. So they should be able to drive down, make the curve and then drive back. Pardon?
You're gonna let them build a road down the end. You're just gonna not follow the setbacks.
Well, it's not gonna be a permanent road, but it is access if they need to get down there. They can.
Said it was gonna be a concrete road.
Well, I can concrete every inch of my property.
So what does that mean?
Well, that means I can concrete clear up to the lot line. I don't have to have a building permit to put concrete in. Do you see what I'm saying? I'm not trying to be snotty or anything, but you can put concrete down anywhere you want to.
How, what is this?
I think the point is the setback applies to the structure that's raised above ground.
Correct. And, and this is not a, this is to me, that, that setback there on the bottom, that twenty-five foot is not a public access roadway. Am I, am I overstating anything if I'm, I'm incorrect?
From this map, where do they enter?
From the top.
Over here?
Yep.
Fifty-two?
Yep. So this is fifty-two, the coffee place sits there. There's a new coffee place in this lot.
By Mike, Don, there's a, a, along the north side of the coffee shop, south side of highway fifty. There's an access point there and then along what's called.
Who maintains it? Does the county maintain it?
Nope.
So you're, you're gonna drive these eighty-three businesses that may come in and out several times a day on that road. Who's gonna maintain that road?
They are homeowners association.
Not these guys.
Oh, you mean the?
These guys don't have any obligation.
You mean the Doe Road or the Buck Road? That road? No.
No, it's the access road that's right south of.
Oh, that little road.
It's gonna have to be the users.
Pardon?
It's gonna have to be the users because the county is not gonna do it.
No, it's like every other private road in the county.
So how are the people that put the road in going to enforce these guys to help maintain it? That's what.
It's gonna be the owners of that area that will have to maintain that road.
So you, what's, what you're telling me Dan, then is if, if I am understanding it is it's the existing road that was put in by owners, they're gonna have to maintain it for these guys.
No, I'm saying whoever uses the road is gonna have to maintain it.
How will you enforce that?
You won't, just like you can't anywhere else in the county. Cause there's no, there's no road ma, there's no road.
It's the coffee place and then it's this place.
It's a coffee place, then this place, then there's two more lots.
Well, I understand that, but we're not talking about the two on the end.
Same with.
They'll come by, drive, get their coffee and then drive in there in theory.
Yeah, they might get their coffee. It's the same with Doe or Buck. You know, Doe and Buck, who maintains that? Not the county.
It's a little bit different. The roads were put in. There's no future maintenance agreement enforcing other landowners that buy land along there
Right.
To help maintain that road if, if I understand it right.
That's, so I understand it, but.
And so what, what my question is, is why is it fair?
Right.
But why isn't right for the, use the existing road that's in there? Who, who, those people have to maintain that road? For eighty-some new businesses that may come in dozens of times a month.
Well, they'll want that road, road maintained too.
Are they gonna sign up that they'll help maintain the road?
Not sure how to answer that, Todd. I mean, it, it works other places in the county where neighbors get along and take care of their properties together.
And it works in a lot of places where they don't get along at all.
I don't know.
That's what I wanna avoid.
Yeah, I don't know how you, I don't know how you maintain a public easement privately in the other way.
Well, I would think.
I would only say that when that road was put in, uh, whoever put it in and the first parcel owners along there likely should have assumed there was gonna be future development and I don't know if there was addressed with the, the property developer at the time, but that's to me how that needs to be handled.
I mean, I'm sure these guys would be happy to have some sort of road maintenance agreement, but on a private, our public easement, I don't know how that works. I don't know if it's done in other parts of the.
Figured it out, people will get at it.
Denny Speck, who was, or Denny.
Rec.
Denny Breck, who was part of all this, he said basically that each lot owner is responsible for what's in front of their road.
So the coffee people are responsible for the first little bit for these folks to drive down.
And we have that ready.
I'll ask Danny if he's got it as part of the agreement.
If you want the association, who will be the owner of the fair land, to ask a if you'd like the association, who's gonna be the bar owner of the land, to have in their covenant that you're gonna get charged for load of rock when it's needed. Hey, that's, that's how they do it generally.
Then everybody's best interest to have a good usable road.
We sell a lot of.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we sell a lot of property in the county and that's how most people do it. Hey, we need a load of rock.
Come up to the coffee guy and say, I need uh fourteen thousand dollars to, to re-uh asphalt to strip a road. He may not feel that's just.
Right. Yeah, that's hard to develop this.
So we do have a motion on the table to approve.
And a, and a second.
And a second, yes. Any further discussion?
Do we wanna add that there'll be some small home association fee to cover the road maintenance going on the I don't know what you call it, an access road? Joe?
No, my motion stands.
No, the challenge becomes the other, there's other properties there too and with, that wasn't required of them. In fact, the, before the coffee place went in, they came in and asked the county to take care of their road and we said no.
No, but there's, they said eighty-six businesses. There's a difference between one and eighty-six.
But I think when that road was initially put in, that was a requirement that we put on.
Is that for Mr. Evans? We put on that? I, I believe we did do.
Wasn't it on the, the guy that's got the big flag?
Oh, um, I don't, Mariah, Mariah Nelson.
No, the.
The RV park?
Camper guy.
Or not RV park, the camper, the camper sales?
It's, it's Phil Spady's daughter, Mariah.
Anyway.
Okay.
Uh, to Wanda's point, I don't think it's a terrible idea.
Any one of these lots in the lakeside commercial could have a campground, it could have a hotel, it could have a number of businesses with lots of traffic.
Uh, but to Wanda's point, there's eighty-three different ones coming in one location for a conditional use permit.
So if I put it up a two hundred.
Has indicated that he's, that's acceptable to them. A small, a small fee to each homeowner or association thing.
Yeah, they're willing to maintain that road. They want a good road to their property. It's real simple.
And, and I think to Wanda's point, Joe, we have a, a people who are going through the conditional use process and willing to do something like that and have that in the CUP, why wouldn't we add it?
Like, my concern, and I can add it, um, if they're willing to, my concern is that previous developers have not been forced to add such a thing. And how do you make a motion to add something with meaning? Because if I say a small fee shall be assessed by the home association, it could be a penny. And who's gonna enforce this? The county doesn't wanna enforce any more than we have to. If it's an absolute sticking point, I will amend the motion, but those are the reasons why I'm hesitant.
Mr. Speck?
Yeah, it doesn't matter to us because we're gonna maintain a really good road there because we've got eighty units that we wanna sell, keep people happy.
And instead of a small fee, should it just say road maintenance agreement?
I like that.
Because they could be the ones doing it. It could be one person steps up and just writes a check. Is it just road maintenance agreement? Joe, would you be okay with that?
Again, if it's sticking point, yeah, that, what if nobody comes to an agreement? What if the agreement is these guys have this conditional use um hanging over their head and they can't move forward until this is agreement, agreed upon and, and another adjacent landowner says well, they've got this agreement, we want it paved or we're not signing.
Well, the road maintenance agreement would just be for this owner, is that correct? Or are you expecting them to go out and get in a road maintenance agreement of other owners? That's where I'm confused.
I believe they're asking for all the owners that would be using that road, all adjacent property owners that would use that road.
I'm getting no nods here. That, that wasn't the intention unless Dan was something different. Is that what you thought, Dan?
Well, the most fair way is that they're all sharing it based on the footage or footage that they have.
Right.
Uh, in my opinion, but.
I guess we'd ask that, you know, you'd leave it out and let neighbors work it out and.
I tell you, if I were the, if I were the coffee cup guy and somebody come in and said we're gonna build this down there and, and we're gonna help maintain it. You have to pay for your fifty-two feet. We'll pay for our, whatever it is.
Right.
Eight hundred feet. I'd be paying for my fifty-two feet pretty damn fast.
Yeah, I mean, just however you guys would like to do it, they're willing to do it.
Joe?
If you guys can come up with a, they're okay.
What do you wanna do with your motion, Joe?
Does anybody have a suggestion that's enforceable and that can move forward? If so, I will accept it and if not, I would say let them work it out.
Joe, since, since when did we ever do that? I, I can't, I can't remember very many times.
No.
I'm, I'm trying to grow and learn, Don, because, and my concern is that we can put motions in, but if, we've been bitten before on, on adding motions that are unclear, that don't have specifics into it and, and um and I, I totally understand the point and I do think they need to work it out and, and it needs to be fair. Um, my concern is just with the next, the next one that, that uh wants to build. If they wanna build a hotel, they could build two hundred units in a hotel and have two hundred cars in and out every day. So it's, it's difficult to to force this unless it's a, a road district is formed or there's an agreement by that developer at, upfront. When you purchase that land, that should all be discussed. I know if I'm gonna buy a land that downstream is gonna be developed, I'm gonna find out who's paying for these roads and maintaining them.
If it makes you feel any better, um, I did talk with the owner, Scott Shrimp of the coffee shop. Not particularly about the easement or the access, but about water and where the water plan was and what they had done. So he's aware of the project, plus he's been notified twice, plus it's got a sign out there.
Well, this isn't the only hurdle they have. They also have to get a letter from the D A N R, so.
Right.
Even if.
I, you didn't answer this or we didn't ask it, but I think one of the, one of the uh the purchase agreement items was, this is all based on maintaining financing. Is that covered?
Yeah, their financing is covered.
Okay.
So with, with that, um, I'm not hearing any real home runs on, on verbiage. I, I think we'll just leave the motion as is and move forward.
So the motion is to approve based on findings of fact. Um, plus the caveat, no residences. The D A N R? No, that's not in here. That, that is something in my opinion, we need to quickly fix in the ordinance, but it would be a variance if we didn't get it fixed. Yes.
And I, and if I were you guys, I'd never get into that because you gotta. And I, and if I were you guys, I'd never get into that, because you got to get eighty variances.
So I would think our best bet would be to look at how the city has it wording in their ordinance and to move at amending ours.
And what's the process for that for you guys?
That would be us initiating language to get that to the planning commission and then to the county commission for approval.
So like a forty-five day?
Like three months, brother. Closer to that.
So.
So what you're just so I'm clear, what you're approving tonight?
Is a conditional use permit to build these buildings.
But they won't be able to sell them individually until the variance, either they get a variance for
Either they get a variance for each one of them.
Or
How long does it take to build them? Put concrete down, prepare the soil, and then build the first set ballpark.
We've started.
We're just asking, I'm just asking for a guess.
Well, part of it is the building of the building is probably going to take four months uh, concrete, and then we have the issue of buying the property, which is subject to this planning and zoning.
I, I don't, I don't know whether they have a, a bank loan on this project or not. But I don't think I question how a bank would look at it, putting it up and then with the fact that they have to come in and get a variance.
Yeah, they would. They probably wouldn't start until the variance issue is resolved.
So for the, for the rest of the board, I guess that, you know, the building permit is what allows him it's pretty close. The building permit is what allows him to build the building. The conditional use is the use that he's trying to do. And I know many other examples we've done. Uh, they've stated in there, the conditional use will be this specifically, so I guess I, I do not see why he'd have to come through for all of these variances. If that's the case, then why is he getting a conditional use permit right now? He's getting a conditional use permit to operate this. And if we approve it, why would we approve it if he also needs a variance? To me, it doesn't make sense. And that's why conditional uses are for the multifamily homes, for the duplexes and all of those. Otherwise, those would all be variances, so.
And that's why we're here. To do what Dan said, because we're advised by building, planning and zoning.
I guess I'm ready to vote and see where it turns out. Be, because somebody explained to me the reason for him to get a conditional use to operate this and then come, it'd be, and then come back to get a variance. It'd be like if we approved a conditional use permit for a multifamily home and then made him come back and do a variance for each and every one. It, it's laid out in the conditional use permit that these are his rules, these are what he's going to apply for, and in my opinion, if we approve this, it's done and he moves on.
So these are essentially warehousing facilities or self-storage warehouses.
It's, it's
They require conditional use permits. That's why we're doing it. In a lakeside
But I, I think you, you, I, we get where you stand, Sherry, but I guess the rest of the, the board to me, it doesn't make him, sense for him to come in for something else. So we approve it here, fine, if we don't, fine. But I don't understand why we'd run him through a variance after we approved his conditional use. But that's we all say we want economic growth and development. This is a different thing. I get it. Yes, it is, but it has a lot of good potential.
And marijuana was new too, and we amended our ordinance to put it in, so.
No variances.
You know, you could, once, once recreational's here, you could.
But you
Possibility.
It could qualify.
Yeah, you get all those green lights in there.
I'm, I'm ready to call the question on this, guys, so let's, let's vote.
Any other discussion? There is a motion on the table to approve. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Dan?
Yes.
Sherry? Yes.
Thank you for your vote of confidence. Um, what did you approve?
You'll have to read about it in the newspaper.
You essentially have a conditional use permit to build everything on your plan. You can build those buildings. Now it is on us to work with language, so you can sell individual planted lots off.
Okay, so you're going through to, you're going to change, attempt to change
I will spearhead that.
Ordinance to get that done.
Yes.
The word is attempt.
Right.
You, you identified it.
Okay, so.
Yep, because we needed to cover duplexes, fourplexes, other things like that. It's very similar.
The, the rest of the board feels we need to change this. We might never get another one of these.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So why would we want to change our zoning ordinance for one thing that happens?
We offered a variance for the duplex on Violet. Dan, explain that.
I wasn't on the board, Joe. Explain it to me.
So.
Twenty years of precedence.
I'm just, I'm going to chime in that the conditional use permit, obviously Mr. Speck, was the, is the first step. But then when you look under the requirements, there's a minimum lot size, there's setbacks, there's all of that. The question, and I haven't been here long enough to know, is how things were done for any units that were not a single oh, single ownership.
Right.
So that's where we are. So this is not going to stay single ownership. Just like a townhouse or a condo or any of those six.
Sure.
So what chairman, what Ms. Lowes, Mrs. Lowes, Mr. Healy, everybody else is given that, and given the fact that as part of the CUP, you have to meet those requirements. We have to take a look at if it's not going to remain in single ownership. How does that affect the minimum lot size and any of those requirements? So I have no problem again, put, you know, getting our office involved to take a look at it. And Mr. Clemish? It may happen again. I mean, I'm not for sure how all those multi ownership buildings were put together. And I and I, I apologize that I don't, but that would be the first question, so.
I just needed clarification of what you actually voted on.
Yep.
So I think I know now.
Yep.
We appreciate your consideration.
So would there, would, would you be opposed to putting a time restriction unless getting the verbiage changed or addressed?
No, I mean, it's, it's certainly some, it's something we can certainly look at and figure out. I want to go back and see how those others were done, because again, I've been sitting here going okay, yeah, if you think about it, if you have a minimum lot size of one acre, but it's a condo and there's six of them on one acre, then obviously you don't even have the minimum lot size, because they're all owned individually.
Right, you just do it like every other one I've been involved with. The setback is for the building, not the individual.
Correct, correct. But if you look at the wording
Right, I agree.
It requires that, so I, I don't know thirty days, Don, but I would say
Thirty is not enough.
There's, there's no way, because the first, we'd have to figure out what we want, then we'd have to get it to the planning commission. The planning commission meets next Tuesday. They'd need it all ten days ahead of that, so there's no way you can make it this month. Earliest would be going to the planning commission next month, and then we, we skip a day and then we have two meetings.
And I'd like to put a date on it, so that these people know what they
I think we should, we, to that point, we should first see if, if, I guess in my opinion, we, it doesn't need a variance because that's what the conditional use permit was for.
No.
If the rest So you, you think, well, then why do we do a conditional use permit? Why don't we just issue them a building permit and then have a variance?
Because the use requires a CUP.
I, I disagree, but that's fine.
It's, that's pretty obvious. So I think, Don, your thirty days, we can have an answer for what we've done and what we need to do. Easy. Well, I shouldn't
I don't think we can get the whole thing done in thirty days.
No, but we can have an answer and a plan within thirty days, and then if we have a plan, planning commission, county commission.
So it's county commit, excuse me, planning commission meets second Tuesday?
Yes, every month, second Tuesday.
August tenth, twelfth.
Yeah, yeah. So it'd be August, and then it would be
The next meeting?
County Commission.
So by the end of August, there could be a change in the zoning.
No, it would be, um, middle of September.
October, because then after it passes, it's twenty days.
Advertise it.
But
Okay. But you'd have some assurance.
You do.
Yes.
No.
An idea. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Entertained a motion to go back in regular session.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Kettering, second by Fox. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. Item eleven, we are really behind. Apologies for that. West Eleventh Street Road Improvement Resolution. So this is the hearing for um, let me bring this up. We've been discussing this for quite some time, over a couple of months now. And this is the final meeting to approve or not approve this road agreement. So this is a resolution establishing a necessary necessity for improvement. Um, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Anyone care to make a public comment? There being none, public comment is closed. And I will be, bring it to the board for discussion. So the changes that were suggested over the last several meetings, um, have been incorporated in here. Any final language concerns? All right, if anyone would care to make a motion?
I would move to approve the supervisor's resolution establishing the necessity for improvement Resolution twenty-two dash oh four as amended
Second.
Set forth in our packet.
Did you second that, Joe?
Second, correct.
So motion by Fox, second by Healy to approve the resolution. Further discussion? Roll call vote.
Wanda?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Don?
Abstaining.
Dan?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes, so motion passes four zero with Kettering abstaining. I do want to thank you folks for your patience. So I think this is going to be a good project. So according to the resolution, next year you will see this in your tax, on your tax bill for payment for five years, so. Alrighty, thank you.
I just bring up a question. Do you have any questions on start date time?
It would be on the, um, plan for next year. We'll have to update our five-year plan to put that in there, but no, it are, we're booked this year too much than, we have more to do this year than we'll get done already, so it will be next year. But we're almost to next year.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we're halfway there.
So we won't be taxed next year, or the following?
No, it would, it would start next year, and then your improvement would be done next summer, and so you'll enjoy that improvement for half of next year. Or whatever it ends up being. So, and then going forward. You know, if, I guess if Mike can squeeze it in, he'd squeeze it in, but I know I certainly am not going to volunteer him for that. I know what his work schedule is.
It'll further impact you on how much you hate those rumble rumble bars.
Rumble bars, because once it's paved, you know, everybody's driving sixty, so on a paved road. Next year, it'll be in their bill next year. Yep. So, alrighty, we did item twelve and item thirteen, we are down at item fourteen. So this is our county poor relief guidelines and medical assistance application, and we're discussing tonight, no action's going to be taken. So hopefully.
And you can you know, limit your discussion. You can email if you have specific questions. Mary and I are still proofing everything, so I found more typos again today, but the overall plan would be to update this and, um, she took a lot of time and Lisa started it, and we've just been looking at everybody else's applications um, and guidelines, because ours are outdated. So the plan would be, again, just to get your feedback. And if there's anything specific, it's probably easier just to email me if you find something that, you know, we, doesn't make sense or errors that we might have in there. But her plan would be to have you guys approve this whenever you feel comfortable, and then we would get it posted on the county website, so that people could access it and know what, what the requirements are to qualify.
So would you like final action on July nineteenth or the first meeting in August?
I think the first meeting in August is fine.
So let's target that. So if everyone could review, get feedback back to, uh, Deb or Mary you know, in the next couple of weeks, then you have a couple of weeks to work your magic. And then the first meeting in August, which I don't have my calendar in front of me, just.
Second. August second.
August second. So that'd be Aug- August second would be our goal to officially review it. So again, if you could get your suggestions, concerns, et cetera, to the state's attorney's office soon. That'd be great. I thought it looked, the first reading, I thought it looked really good. Lot of time put into that. So appreciate that. It's been needing to be done. Public comment, item fifteen. Any citizen care
Just left.
Care to make a public comment? All right, no public comment. I will close public comment. Commissioner updates. Would anyone care to share? All right, that was pretty short. Item seventeen.
I'd move to go into executive session for poor relief issues pursuant to STCL one dash twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight thirteen one point three. Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to go into executive session for poor relief. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. We are now in executive session. Joe, are you going to call in or are you departing?
I will likely depart. Deb, you don't, do you need me in there? Okay, I'll, I will, uh, exit the meeting then. Patty, if you want to make note, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks for chairing it tonight.
I'd make a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Clemish, to go back into regular session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
I would make a motion to recommend payment for CWMI twenty-two dash two dash oh five. I'm sorry. CWMI twenty-two dash two oh oh five, CWMI twenty-two two oh oh nine. CWMI twenty-two dash two oh eleven, CW twenty-one dash four dash fifty-five. CW twenty-one dash four dash oh fifty-six. C W twenty-one dash four dash oh fifty-six pursuant to S D C L twenty-eight dash thirteen in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred ten dollars four cents.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Kettering to approve payment for the files stated in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred ten dollars and four cents. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.
I would recommend the denial of payment to C W twenty dash one dash zero zero two, C W twenty dash one dash zero zero three, C W dash, C W twenty dash one dash zero zero four, C W twenty dash four zero zero four, C W twenty dash four zero zero seven, C W twenty dash four zero zero eight, and C W twenty-two dash one zero zero forty-four pursuant to S D C L twenty ash, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point one, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three, twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three sub one in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Kettering to deny the cases listed in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero. Items for next meeting?
I sent you Lewis and Park's budget request. Do you still want them to come on the nineteenth? They've already come.
Who?
I don't think we need, I don't think we need them to come again.
I don't think we need another presentation, we've seen it once.
That's fine. Okay. All right, well, if you have items for the next meeting.
And I'll be on vacation next week, so Karen will be.
Okay.
And when do we need items in by, just for clarification?
Wednesday.
Okay, the Wednesday.
Wednesday before the meeting.
Before the Tuesday.
Is it noon on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Noon on Wednesday.
Great.
Always.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Dan, motion by Clemish, second by Fox to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Motion carries four zero.